City Council Work Session for August the first, two thousand and twenty-two to order. We have a forum. Item three on our agenda this evening is Citizen Input. Is there any citizen here this evening that would like to address Mayor and Council at this time? Anybody other than Mr. Camp? That's the only citizens I see out there, so. Thank you. Item four are items for review and discussion. Item four A is the Office of the City Manager for a one is an economic market city debt discussion. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, you may remember it's your April nineteenth, uh, council meeting to approve an agreement with the Perry Public Facility Authority of a series named twenty-two bonds, what was called. Uh, we had Mr. Owens, uh, from Raymond James here with you all that evening. Had a very nice presentation for you all to accompany that request. Uh, and I believe that request to you all and current situations with the economy and markets and all that type of thing, uh, got a lot of you thinking about what's going on and how what's going on might impact the city, uh, and kind of where we stand with some of our debt and our financing, our projects and all that. Uh, so following up on that, we actually asked if, uh, Mr. Owens, uh, would come back and speak to you all a little bit more about that, a little bit more in depth about what's going on in the market. And we are fortunate to have this this evening, uh, Mr. Owens back with us and also Mr. Camp, uh, with Raymond James, and they have a very nice presentation for you all. Um, hope you all enjoy it and I think they'll make themselves available for questions afterwards. Mr. Owens, Mr. Camp?
Absolutely. Okay, uh, thank you all for having us. Um, we're gonna try to look through this relatively quickly, but we do want to talk to you a little bit about the economy in general and then talk to you about where the city stands in terms of debt, uh, and just what we see in terms of the market going forward. Um, get this call up. Mind control.
I'm gonna turn it on this side.
While they're working that out, I mean, I, I, I'll just say a few things for purposes. We're not economists, but we're both sort of, uh, market participants and we follow these things up that are close to it. Um, so we'll try to give you some ideas of what we're seeing, what we make, uh, pay a very low forward. Uh, the first thing that we cover is just interest rates and inflation, what we see happening here. Uh, we're then going to go on and talk about a recession just a little bit and how that may impact the city and then I'll go and talk about the city's, uh, debt and where it's standing. So, let's see if I can. Right. Well.
Wow, I can't handle paper.
All right, which one? Okay, right there, got it, all right. Okay, here we go. All right, now we're off. We're off. Uh, big picture, it's hard to pin inflation on any one particular, uh, factor. One of the things that jumped out at us somehow every day, what we call the into money supply. Just think about that, that's all the money in circulation. Uh, you can see on this chart that that has generally grown at a trend of about six percent a year. And then you get to the spring of twenty twenty, you have COVID breakout and you have federal government put a tremendous amount of basically cash into the system. And so here you can, you see despite the money supply go up, and you can see that peaked about four point seven trillion dollars higher than that traditional trajectory rate of the money supply. Basically, just much money got within circulation, what happened? That money gets spent, goods become scarce or whatever, because there's everyone competing to purchase them, or you may have some security, you know, supply chain, uh, follow backs. But regardless, there's a lot of money in the system, but what we've seen recently is that rate slowing down, helping coming back towards this trend a little bit. Um, what do you get? Well, you get exactly what you would expect. This is that into money supply going up, and then about twelve months later, as you can see, inflation following, just like a dancing puppet here. Um, it has peaked, as you can see, this is the last two months, just again, and then hopefully maybe we're starting to see some signs of inflation just peaking, but we'll see what plays out as far as that goes. Uh, this is a chart just plotting inflation. You can see, this orange bar represents energy. Uh, a lot of times you hear about inflation, you hear about inflation without food and energy, excluding energy. Uh, you can see here in that period of twenty twenty, we were all at homes, nobody would drive a car, there's a point in there where they would pay you to take a tanker of oil if, uh, if you had a way to deliver it. Uh, and now you can see here at the same, the opposite effect, right? This is us using energy again, this is the bottleneck in our supply, uh, limited refining capacity, but you can see here with this core inflation area, I just may be starting to show some signs of the peak, um, let's hope so, but you can still see the energy and food are having a pretty serious effect if you look at the top line inflation number, where about nine percent. This big chart is just a estimate of actual market participants. When you purchase a, a bond, even the city's bond, investors make a calculation and say they want a return that reflects their interest, right? They're loaning you money for some period of time, they expect to get that back with interest. That interest reflects the risk of the investor to it. Uh, this is the difference between a five-year US Treasury bond. Somebody buys a bond from the federal government, they make the same internal calculations as somebody would if they buy a bond from the city in a period. They want that money back and they want it back with interest that will hopefully outpace inflation, right? And there may be some reasons, I just want safety in my investments, so maybe it doesn't develop inflation, but the investor has somewhere in their factor then, how much is my money worth when I get it back? And they want that inflation to return. Uh, this blue line is a separate set of treasuries that are treasury inflation protection securities. They're just like regular treasuries in every respect except for they adjust based on what actual inflation turns out to be. And so you can look at the difference between a regular treasury and the inflation protected treasury, and the difference is just the market's expectation for what will inflation be. And so even this is a five-year period, or a five-year treasury. And so you can see here, people who are actually putting money, making these, called bets, but making calculations and making estimates of what inflation should be, those are expectations. People back in March, about three point five nine percent, what they expect inflation to do over a five-year period, and that's down to about two point five six percent. So, again, may or may not happen, but this is a real world, you know, real people with actually skimming the game, you bet for a five-year period, you see about two and a half percent of inflation. Uh, this is just US Treasury rates. We look at this chart, some of you borrow bonds for one to thirty years, these are, this will be a one-year treasury, all the way up to the thirty-year. That dark blue line is the historical average, on average, for instance, right here, for ten-year, on average, you'd expect a ten-year treasury to be about, call that three seventy-five. Today, that's exactly a load of this, a chart as we call it, but it was about three percent when we put this thing together. Uh, but the interesting thing here is we have what's called an inverted yield curve. You may have heard about that recently in the news. That's a situation where short-term interest rates have a higher return than long-term interest rates. Uh, historically, what we expect is to see something like this blue curve, where if I'm loaning money for one year, I expect one return, I'm loaning it for two years, I would expect a little higher, all the way up to thirty years. The longer we go, I have a little more risk when I'm loaning that money, and so the natural order of things is to expect a little higher return, the longer you put money inside. Right now, you're not seeing that. Uh, right now, you have inverted yield curve, and so what does that mean? Well, inverted yield curve historically has been a sort of a leading indicator of recession. Uh, these black, these dark gray bands show you recession and that blue is unimportant. Uh, excuse me, that, that blue is the inversion, so anytime that gets along this black line, you have a, an inverted yield curve. So you can see in pretty much every recession except for this COVID, very short COVID-induced recession, uh, in modern times, we've had a yield curve inversion right before that happens. Um, it's not necessarily predictive, but what it does mean is that investors have an expectation that we may be heading into a recession, right? And also interest rates, they're expecting, they're making, providing a more, a higher return to investors for a shorter period than they do for a longer period, which backwards. But it means I have safety concerns about the short-term period. But the longer-term period, I think, means a lot now, ultimately, if you, you sort of assign, what's my long-term expectation, probably economy will go up a little longer period of time, and, and those expectations kind of being taken down. Um, the other thing you hear a lot about are the Federal Reserve raising the Fed funds rate. Again, this is a week old, but this is where that Fed funds target rate went to, uh, between two point two five to two and a half percent. All this chart shows you is that the expectation of the market right now is to have a fifty basis point increase at the September meeting and another fifty basis point increase in November. The interesting thing is at that point, the market's expecting the interest rate increases from the Federal Reserve would be, uh, mostly stopped, and actually by next summer, they're looking at the Federal Reserve being lower interest rates, which may be, trying to stimulate the economy, uh, to get those hits started again.
And y'all remember when they, in fact, interest rates, and they raised their, well, they're affecting the shortest end of the curve, overnight lending, the shortest end of the curve. So all these other rates, we're talking about one to thirty years, are market-driven based on the action that the Fed's taken. So they've got the short-term yields jacked up so much, there's not much difference between overnight and thirty years.
Uh, this is the end of this little inflation section, but I'll leave you with one last call, is the, the Federal Reserve has a dual mandate, which is maximum employment and price stability, but we all want some measure of inflation. We don't want dramatic inflation, but we do want a little bit of inflation. Why do we want that? Well, nobody has incentive to buy anything if we think the price is going to be the same forever, right? It's why deflation is such a problem, right? If I believe something could be cheaper next week, I'll buy. And so, right, back out, economics, we want commerce. If every car on the lot should be cheaper next month, nobody buys cars this month. And so that's why deflation is such a problem, and why we actually do want a little bit of inflation, but we don't want out of control, we don't want six, nine percent inflation. Uh, so again, you'll see the Federal Reserve at some point start lowering rates, we want money to be freer, we want people to actually go out and, uh, conduct commerce. You know, from the city's standpoint, what does inflation happen? You're already experiencing these things, city costs go up, and public costs can go up, uh, to the extent you need to borrow. Those inflation investors are doing, uh, these calculations, that, so, that ought to be a load of money. If money's getting cheaper, right, if money's getting less valuable because of inflation going forward, my rent needs to reflect that, with inflation going forward. Uh, and we've certainly seen construction cost rise, right? Uh, not only is there a lot of money around, there's a lot of federal money going directly into infrastructure, which is fed materials, the, you know, public entities, meaning concrete, gasoline, diesel fuel, uh, fed materials that you would use steel are being used eventually by these, uh, infrastructure projects. One possible, the city should be seeing a increase in its investor earnings, uh, the earnings you have, general fund cash, et cetera, for the first time in a long time, we're seeing people make a little bit of money on that front, uh, which is very positive. Uh, gonna go through this section pretty quickly, but there, if you follow the press, you know, there's been, particularly the last week, you get a debate over whether or not we were in a recession. Uh, I'm gonna try to look at the politics of that all together, but, you know, what is a recession, right? It's not just us that are wondering, this is Google trend, this is Google searches for a recession, which you can see around all the time. There's a lot of people out there who want to know, either are we in a recession or what is a recession? Uh, it's central place, right? Does anybody feel like we're in a recession? If so, I do. Um, if you go to just a book definition of it, uh, inflation is a period of time that refers to the significant decline in general economic activity, right? And that's sort of where this controversy is coming in here, right? Are we experiencing that? Well, we haven't had a way of measuring that. And historically, the way we've measured that is we've said, if gross domestic product compounds for two consecutive quarters, that's a recession, right? Because we have to have some, I mean, we are, right, we have to, we have to have some way of measuring it, and so that has been the traditional definition. Uh, as you may have seen, the National Bureau of Economic Research, who is the, the power to the media in terms of declaring one, has recently said, well, maybe that's not a recession. And again, setting politics aside, uh, if you're not a cent about it, the reason that is, is we are missing some of the traditional elements of a recession at the moment. Not to say those things aren't coming, but unemployment, you know, unemployment's at virtually all time low, we've got jobs open left and right, people do not have trouble finding their work if they're interested in finding their work today. We do have inflation, and so for my money, I still use the working definition, we've always had unemployment, we've got no recession, which is two consecutive quarters of the growth, with the understanding that there are some factors that don't look exactly traditionally like a recession. And this, the chart that you show is that. Again, the dark bars are recessions, and you can see in virtually every recession prior to this, this blue line is unimportant. You see unemployment, you know, every time we're in a recession. This is the most recent COVID, uh, recession, it was only a two-quarter recession. And it's not saying we're a recession at the start, and we won't see unemployment despite what we don't have that as of right now. So, a little bit non-traditional, I'd argue, with all that modestly, makes us in a non-traditional, uh, situation really. You know, you're getting deep in the presentation, but you're, you're going to Twitter as a source, but I thought this was kind of humorous, that, uh, uh, you know, it's not a recession, unless it's from a recession reading of France, so why not? It's hard for me. So, I gotta kick out of that. You know, again, bring this back to the city itself, why we're worried about recessions is pretty obvious, but you may have your employer suffer, I mean, obviously your citizens are in suffering, um, suffer the tax impact, right? People travel less, um, people make less purchase, sales back, business licenses, all those things that you would expect to see decrease. Now, the benefits are, you may see some of your, your public works projects can go down in your cost, you may actually see borrowing costs decrease in a recession. Uh, we'll see. Uh, you know, a big thing I would point out, you know, the relationship between inflation and recession, this is, you have to think about inflation from the standpoint of what's it going to do, and eventually you give what they call demand and structure, right? Things cost more, it costs more to fill up my car with gas, eventually I get that and suck the millions, which is why these two concepts are, you know, somewhat interrelated, right? Inflation can push you into a recession, that's what, what I'll, it leads to take away and the relationship between those two things. Interest rates going up makes it harder to purchase a car, makes it harder to purchase a new house, whatever those things may be. Those things that you see, follow around behind inflation, eventually, it's normally demand for, for goods and products that people would buy, people buy less products, eventually we have that unemployment will eventually come out. And so, we'll see how this is developed, but for now, we're okay on the, uh, the employment front, but we'll see what's coming down the track. Uh, we'll see if our power company in Washington continue to, to spend and, um, prompt that boom, we'll, we'll see what happens. Bill's gonna talk to you just a little bit about your debt specifically, and, uh, just where should stay in in terms of, of rates and borrowing.
There's also the, so Tom did a great job on economic theory, I think there's also the point we could add there. Yeah, mortgages have gone up, borrowing costs have gone up, mortgages are five something percent. You know, I don't think it's normal to have mortgages at two something percent. I don't think it's normal to borrow long-term debt at two something percent. So, we've also not only come through an unusual kind of, of economic period, but I think that the idea of the soft landing, you know, the, the hard landing is, uh, they stall out the economy and sort of crashes and, and we join into a recession. I don't think the soft landing is out of the window, if we can still borrow mortgages at historically low rates, right? So, I mean, all is not lost, but I'm here to talk about you. Um, okay, you've got several series of bonds that are outstanding. This is a chart of the last fourteen years, and each one of those stars represents when the city borrows some money, all right? This is the ten-year tax-exempt, uh, what we call MMD, municipal market data, and, um, you can see where you borrow them. And the red line shows you where we are right now. So, I don't have to think about what's gonna happen in the future, I know where we are today, and I know where you've been in the past, and you have borrowed at very good points. You have borrowed when you needed money, and you borrowed money very cheap. And, um, we're gonna get more detail, but basically, each one of these transactions, you borrowed money below current markets, and you borrowed money below where short-term treasury yields are currently, right? So just move along. Okay, this is a little bit of detail about each one of your outstanding series of bonds. Twenty-two at the top, two thousand thirteen at the bottom, um, and just going from the bottom up. Your bond yield in two thousand thirteen, six-year average life was a little under two percent. You just go all the way up, two percent, two percent, three percent, one-six, your GFO loans of one eighty-nine, that's the, the largest obligation you've got outstanding. Twenty-one bonds have a bond yield of three eighty-five, and, uh, our twenty-two bonds have bond yield just under three and a half percent. Keep in mind, you could go take money today and buy US Treasuries yielding three percent during six or twelve months, okay? That just gives you an idea. Remember, your twenty-two bonds had an average life of seventeen years, so, um, historically speaking, again, you borrowed when you needed money, and we borrowed money cheap. So now we're paying back investors with dollars that are worth less than what we sold our bonds for. You built projects when they were cheaper, because if, if, if you believe we're in an inflationary period, which we are, you borrowed money, you built your things before costs got out of you, all right? This is all of our outstanding debt, all right? Two on the far left are water sewer revenue bonds. The investors have a lien on your water sewer revenue system only. In two thousand seventeen, and up through twenty-two, you issue debt to the public facilities authority. Now legally, what they have is an unlimited pledge from you to pay them back the money and all revenues, but I'm gonna show you why these things were structured the way they were and why they, why our payments are what they are. And, uh, and, and our GFO, the intent obviously is to pay that back with water sewer revenues, but it's also an intergovernmental contract backed. But at our high watermark, we've got debt service of about two point seven million dollars a year. All right, general funds related debt. What do I mean by that? These are our bonds that were issued for the golf course acquisition, for parks, for the Seaport property, these are general fund revenues, let's call it taxes, property taxes. And so, we've, we've got a long-term, generally leveled debt service going in there so that, and it drops off towards the end, but we know on a year-to-year basis what we sort of have to cover, and reasonably of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year from general funds, okay? Gas system, part of our two thousand nineteen bond issue funded gas system improvements. We went thirty years, we went out long, thirty years, and, um, we did that to provide ample coverage. You can see in the last five years, you just have to take the word for it, but going through your audit, looking at revenues versus expenses, you look at net revenues available to pay debt service, you've got three to almost five times coverage every year for the last five years. And again, in nineteen, we borrowed twenty-year average life and a bond yield of three forty-three. Again, you can take your cash today and invest it for six months, for twelve months, and make free, so we're not, we're not doing bad at all. All right, water sewer debt, and as this, um, we, we're, um, we have water sewer revenue bonds, which have a lien, and we have a requirement to operate the system to give those investors a one-third coverage. Um, the PFA bonds, we do not have that similar requirement, but we have structured our debt so that water sewer can tote it off, and we've got about a one-twenty coverage based on twenty-one, uh, revenues. Um, the other reason we like, we wanted to avoid water sewer-related bonds, it's, all you can do is adjust rates, fees, and charges. Our rating is an A-one for our water sewer bonds. Our PFA, which we can use any and all revenues, make those payments, has a higher rate, double A three, that means a lower cost of borrowing. And also, the old ordinance from two thousand four requires an annual, um, requires us to keep aside an annual debt service fund, in other words, enough money to pay principal and interest to bondholders equal to one year's debt service. It's about nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we've got set aside. We don't want to fund that anymore, we don't have to, we don't want to borrow money, it just sits, so sooner or later, those water sewer bonds will be gone. But you've got ample coverage on the water sewer bonds themselves, and you've got leveled up service via payback from, uh, the water sewer system to pay these bondholders. All right, I did it too.
Roll that thing aside.
And this was our best slide, but again, all about, all right? So in summary, in summary, thank you, sir, in summary, you chose to borrow money when you needed money, right? You funded your projects with debt, other people's money, instead of using your own cash, because money was cheap. Now, rates have gone up, you've got cash that you would not have had, and that cash is earning yields above the debt that you're paying back to investors. So in other words, you have made the right decision, if you needed to do the projects, you'd either pay cash or borrow money, you chose to borrow money. A lot of your debt is outstanding at a yield of two percent or less, and again, short-term cash can be invested for you. Um, we also bundled up different needs. We had, um, parks, we had gas, we had water sewer-related borrowings, and as you needed them, we bundled them into single transactions, which is easier, better for us to sell to investors, that gets a lower cost of borrowing. Um, we, we use the public facilities authority, it's, it's a higher credit rating, lower interest expense to you than, than a traditional water sewer revenue only. And we've always got a business model in mind. Our business plan is to pay back different chunks of our debt from our different revenue sources, and you've got ample coverage on water sewer, gas, and even your general fund. Um, and again, we borrow money the majority of the time lower than interest rates are now for short-term savings, short-term investment. So, um, the question might be, looking back on it, should we have done anything any different? And historically, where we're standing today, we borrowed money lower than current market rates, we borrowed lines that are using our own cash, and we got cash, in many cases, earning a higher interest rate than the debt we're paying back from. So, very good. So it's a very good way to run your capital gains. And that's it. We took a long time. But if you have any questions, we're both here to. I've been working for y'all since oh-four. I missed one meeting, and Robert says, Tom, Tom, can you come back? So I'm glad to be able to, I'm glad to be able to come along as well. Thank you.
Questions, Councilor? That was very informative, and it really gives us a very positive view of our debt that we have as a city. And I'm very proud of you guys counseling us to bundle our stuff and also rep some of those bonds to get a much lower interest rate and save the citizens interest. And that's what we're all about, so.
Thanks for letting us work with you all these years. We really do appreciate it. You've got a wonderful staff. They are definitely minding the ship and operating this place like a well machine. And we just are happy to be part of the works. When you need us, we'll always come around and say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. I have a four-eight-two, there's a Cobra rate, Mr. Gill Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, in your package is a memo from me talking about Cobra rate comparison. We recently were advised by a broker that our process we've been using for Cobra rates is not the best, and may be subject to some type of federal action, although we have not had any yet. And so therefore, they advised us that we need to have Cobra rates charged at what the actual cost is. So if you take a look at Chart Eight that I provided to you, you can see the difference in what we're currently charging and then what the actual cost is. So for example, with the employee currently, employee holding coverage if they're on Cobra, we're charging four-seventy-five a month. And that should actually be, if they have the standard program, nine-six-three-sixty-four. Ever see what I have on the chart there? And so according to the federal guidelines, we should be charging an actual higher rate. Now, there is the option we have that we can, as an employer, you can subsidize a portion of the Cobra cost. And so that's what we're here to discuss now for, from administration standpoint. We would recommend on the Cobra rates that we would continue what we have listed there and subsidize the difference if the employee leaves the city because he or she retires. Or if he or she leaves employment because they have been unable to perform their particular duties, for example, disabled. However, I would not recommend to the council that we would be universal across the board subsidizing Cobra. In other words, if you are separated from a city for disciplinary action, I don't think we should subsidize that. So therefore, if you wanted to decide to have Cobra coverage in that particular case, you would have to pay a hundred percent of the Cobra cost. This is not an ongoing forever charge. The normal time period would be a maximum of eighteen months. There are a few circumstances where it may be thirty-six, but generally it's an eighteen-month period. I've also provided to you an example of the last five years. And as you can see there, for retirements, we've had one laid off, inability to perform duties, three. Ever see what I have there? And then just requested, in other words, they just left, two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you want to reconsider this and come back to it. This is not an immediate issue, but we do need to get it resolved early. Do you have to answer any questions?
Questions, Councilor? So the recommendation is that we would subsidize four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and six-and-fourths a month, paying for it.
In that example, yes. If that particular employee retired.
Single employee, not family or.
Right from the start, Dr. Tesch.
If I have been subsidized at basically six-hundred-and-fifty dollars for that.
That's right. Now, we, the essence are already, well, not the essence, we are already doing this. So we're not talking about necessarily an additional cost on top of what we already have. That's already been incorporated in our plan. But if we're going to address the insurance of brokers' debt from the federal review, we need to go through this particular process.
Because we're providing the insurance of four-seventy-five.
That's right.
And we're making the difference.
That's right.
Like we do with an employee.
Exactly.
So if in fact we're not providing Cobra coverage, that's basically what we're doing, unless we make a concession.
That's right. And I want to point out to Council, we are obligated to provide Cobra coverage. That is, you can't just say, no, we're not providing. You have to provide. See, the question is, from Council's standpoint, number one, are you willing to subsidize any of that cost? And if you are, what are the particular circumstances that you subsidize? And then how?
One question, a person who's separated from their job, a cost they're disabled. If they became disabled on the job, that would be another source of income for their life or their compensation or something like that.
Yes, it could, it could. But you could also have a situation where the person has family coverage. And so a disability could work for them, but there wouldn't be anything for their benefit.
And if we, and our retirees, Cobra is all they have, really, unless they were built on.
That's correct. Now, usually what we have with retirees is they are getting Cobra for a certain limited timeframe until they're eligible to get Medicare power. For example, they retire at sixty-three, and they may be eligible to get it at sixty-four. So for that one timeframe before they can roll over to Medicare, they'll take the Cobra coverage.
I'd be sorry to see retirees here, but that Cobra coverage will have to start at the time that they retire to pay the.
Right.
The grand coverage they use by retirement. So the disabled ones and the retiring ones, I would hope you would still take care of, but certainly not someone who was terminated for their performance.
That's exactly right, Ms. Peterson. And that's, that's why the administration's recommending those two circumstances and not cross.
Or they just leave with their own position, and say, you know, I don't know what to do with one subsidy. You're going to go look for another job here on your own.
Now, a number of our employees, excuse me, if I follow up on that category, are usually shifting over from city employment to some other employer. So consequently, they are picking up insurance, or I'm assuming this is pegged up on that. And they would be picked up by an employer, for example, when we, excuse me, lose a police officer to the state. Well, they'll shift over and go on the state's system and be covered, so they don't need to have the Cobra coverage. That's not the same, as you pointed out, Ms. Peterson, with retirees. And it can also be very difficult potentially for someone who's disabled, you know, finding some other subsidy.
Do you want to give us a thought before we move on? Do you want to bring it back up tomorrow, or are you going to work it for weeks?
Do we have a defined approach then that we would take? As far as we would subsidize more businesses.
You gave the administration's recommendation. So if you're satisfied with that, then we recommend to you to vote on that tomorrow, and then we go and we're set with it.
And that was for retirees and disabled that we would.
That's right.
Pay back. But if they leave voluntarily, or they just get fired, things they shouldn't have done, then we don't.
That's right. That's what we're recommending to you.
I think I want to say that, and as for this Cobra, the only important understanding, you know, again, I know that when we put it up out, we want to have everybody understand what's going on. You feel like you're saying one of the reasons, right? Sometimes people might have a problem, they're a human being, and they're disabled on the job, then got a situation in there, a money deficit. An example, I find a lot of things that, you know, it's something that you don't plan for that happen, you know? And the bottom line is that, what's there in front of you, that's one of the things that I, I don't like that. Make sure all your part, understand what we're going to do, you know? I think, I see the thing here, that sometimes people get out there and they're like, things so low down, they get this, and they get that, to understand. I think each individual should understand what's going on in the procedure, and they can be able to do what they do, like you said, actually many things go to Medicare. So even when they're not there, they got trouble, or some family member, you know? On the period, they have to come. If you got problems, you gotta be paying, and they gonna be, they gonna come here. Something gotta happen.
Right. As part of the separation process, all employees are advised of Cobra option. However, we do not go through all possible scenarios and all that type of stuff. We just advise them what's possible, and they make their own decision to that. Usually, it seems to be a case about, they either don't feel they need the coverage or they have another option for it, or if they feel they need it, for example, like a retiree, then they sign up for it. And of course, to be concerned, like Ms. Peterson pointed out, with retirees, is the concern about how much is going to cost them. Well, I mean, everybody's concerned about the cost, don't get me wrong on that. But if you're retiring, you have a basic income, that guy gets accelerated, so.
What does an employee pay, one employee pay if they're working for the city? Under the standard plan, it's free.
Yes, if they're employed.
So the day they leave, it costs four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. You know, they go from being free to four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
That's right. But that is immensely subsidized compared to what the actual cost is.
Because if they didn't, they would cut the full amount.
That is, that's right.
Well, they have to pay for that, and you're, you know, they have to pay for that too, but that's not great. That's a big shocker for me to hear.
Yes. Well, that's true too.
Have to pay for this?
It can be very expensive.
And of course, yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons, not just with the city area, but with the number of employers, that's why you need to stay on, is that it's a huge, well, health insurance company. They're not having a real effective option, even though they may want to pursue some other types of careers, whatever the case may be, they just are not in a position to give up the help they need.
Would you want us to put it on the agenda for a vote tomorrow night? I have a four-eight-three, is a discussion of proposed loading-unloading zone for the downtown district.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first slide, as you see up there, is at the intersection of, I can't tell from here.
I think it's Paul and Carol, Paul and Carol.
Okay, thank you. Right next to Patty, nine-oh-one.
Right.
Everybody familiar with that location? Okay, go to the next one, please. This is the second location on Jernigan Street, right next to where Paulings and Carol is under destruction. Everybody familiar with that location? Okay. You may remember, a little while back, Councilmember Albrecht indicated that he was requested hit up, I'm not quite sure what his favorite term would be, about the vehicles loading and unloading on Carol Street, for the restaurants and the retail and all those type of stuff. And would it be possible to locate a loading, loading zone, unloading zone? So we went to take a look at that, and we had a couple of criteria. The first one, because of all the issues about parking spaces on Carol, I think all councilmembers are familiar with that, that was automatically ruled out of taking out any parking spaces for loading or unloading zones. And the second would be to try and locate one loading zones that would generally be convenient for merchants and particularly the restaurants. We're interested in the restaurants because they usually have the largest, not all, the largest deliveries and the most frequent deliveries. So for example, we did not provide any spacing down on Washington and Carol, where the swans is located, because their delivery trucks will rake in on the drive from the park, unload, and then go up. So these are the two locations. We tried to think about some others, but they generally seem to be about the best. So this hardly went out and sampled the opinion from the different businesses relative to that. You can see in your board that responses from that. I think probably the bottom line of that is no, you know, the merchants and restaurants on Carol Street are not interested in that. Some, as you may have seen in the reading, were very strong relative to that. Others were kind of lukewarm, but there, as far as I could tell, was no real support about making any type of change. In general terms, when you take the regular work week and all that type of stuff, the loading, unloading has not been a significant traffic problem on Carol Street. Now, I'm not, and I know I say that, and there could be somebody who immediately comes out and says, well, wait a minute, I had to wait twenty, well, okay. Everybody with me? But generally, day after day, you know, all that type of stuff, loading and the unloading goes along pretty quick. Some of it is done by the businesses themselves. For example, KC has their own trailer truck that they unload. Others come with a standard single axle rear dropping off deliveries. And I think one of the best examples of that would be some of these food suppliers or the, for example, Cobra wine, with the wine merchants that come in. And then there are a few on occasion that will have a trailer with a single axle. That's mostly food supply. And every once in a while, you may have like a larger eighteen-wheeler coming to drop something off. For example, Lions or, can't do a business name, Mr. Jones. Retail, because all the retail balls are cussers, you know, sometimes they get that type of stuff. So the administration's recommendation, based on the response back from the downtown merchants and everything, would be to just table this request.
By the way, I appreciate y'all looking into it. The phone call, obviously, was not semi-truck related. It was a Coca-Cola van that had to fix the, and he had to go way back to his van. So I didn't envision anything like this, like four-seven. I think it was a one-time thing, and maybe he was hot under the collar. He asked my phone number, so, out of time, and thank you a little bit too.
May, following up on that, I'm certainly not think that it's always going to be super convenient for every delivery person, you know, to go in, it's going to depend on what time of day they go to the business and all that kind of stuff. And of course, we don't provide any warranty or anything on that. You know, what we do say is that there are X number of parking spaces. There are Y number of handicap parking spaces. And then that's it, you know, parking settles itself up.
Council members, are you comfortable with the recommendation?
Councilmembers, are you comfortable with the recommendation to just table it right now, and then we'll get it to the business?
Everybody down there gets a youthism that it's gonna tear this thing all back, so they're gonna be doing a stop off. I can see them starting to complain that they have to park there and go back and pull their truck, you know, so.
Yeah. My understanding is that this is a long table, where it's gonna be tableed, right?
If it comes up, then we'll consider it. 4B, this community development department, 4B1, is there a proposed stormwater enforcement policy, Mr. McBurgh?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a memo to Mr. Gilmore for myself, as the state requires the city to have an enforcement, stormwater enforcement response plan. We have updated ours this year. Uh, when you're talking about stormwater enforcement response, we're talking about illicit discharges, erosion controls, pollution. You may see sedimentation, or danger to environment or public health, things like that, that are in the stormwater system. We are permanent communities, and we're required to enforce our stormwater. In your memo, I kind of outlined a few items, because the full plan is thirty-six pages of mostly tables, charts, definitions, and guidelines for us to go by when we're reviewing this item. So, the first thing I might bring to your attention is, uh, stormwater violations are defined by type and significance. So if they are reoccurring, or they endanger public health, or the environment, they are a higher significance and move up in the timeframe and finding criteria. Down here on, uh, examples, there's a few examples there that many of you are aware of in the, in the community. And then a list of minor fines and the escalation criteria. Fines start at five hundred dollars, and a minor fine will be required to be re-inspected in forty-eight hours. If that is not taken care of, a fine escalates to a thousand. And then, again, forty-eight hours if the problem's not taken care of, then it escalates to twenty-five hundred. And that's our limit by the state, as high as we can go with erosion control violations. If this is a reoccurring. Yes, that's per day, per day from, I mean. Per day from the beginning of the notice violation till it's corrected. Now, of course, with, with these in this packet, there are verbal warnings and written warnings to come before stop working fines. But fines seem to be the, the highest priority for the city to identify a plan for. And, um, if this is a reoccurring event, we do not increase fines. What we do is, we decrease the timeframe that the response is required. So we require corrective action in twenty-four hours opposed to forty-eight hours. So, if something is definitely impacting the environment or public health, we require that to be taken care of. The last note I have on this is, if the city council concurs, this will go into effect immediately. So, we will be adding it to the City of Haver website and working to get that to the community, so everybody's aware of the city's new enforcement response plan. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple enforcement, um, I've become fascinated with code enforcement and stormwater. So, what's the difference between the old one and the new plan?
The main difference is, we follow the only erosion control for sedimentation. That is seventy-two hours response and twenty-five hundred dollars a day, up to. But it doesn't have any definitions to what a minor, a major, a significant, a life-threatening situation or environmental situation is different. And that's something that we need to identify, so when we categorize the type of impact to the environment, we know what we're looking at, it's cross-border, everyone understands that.
Okay, uh, have we filed, filed a plan in New Haven, and have we collected or entered those violations?
I know we have sit fines, uh, I'm not sure if we've collected one, go for it to finance it, so I can't answer that question, but I know we have issue fines.
Okay, so in order to find out whether we have collected, I have to be fine?
Uh, I, oh, no kidding, anyone go answer that question or get that information to me?
And, um, since you were talking about the violations, is it a repeat, a purpose, or are we trying to make it look strong?
Well, let's say, for example, if we have a new development in the community, and that development has not received any, any warnings, then the first conversation would be a verbal warning. We would, of course, record that we had a verbal warning. And then the next violation, if something continues, or let's say that fails again, will be a written warning. And then will be followed by a stop work, uh, notice, and then this notice for forty-eight hours provides to begin.
On that.
Is this a protocol, code enforcement, though, is this a stormwater?
This is not code enforcement. This is a separate program that is handled by, uh, the stormwater department, which is myself and my staff, and anybody in the city that has been trained to inspect erosion control, sedimentation, pollution. So it's really required as a visiting, a local issue authority from EPP. So this counter goes hand in hand with the requirement to inspect sites and provide enforcement for needed.
I realize that they are separate. I realize that one of the stormwater and one of this code enforcement, what I play on, I have become fascinated with those two areas now. That's all I see. I know they're different, let me clarify that. But, um, I think I have one more question. Okay, so what do we need to do to make the new plan more effective than the last?
Oh, simply implementing and allowing our staff to follow these guidelines, and then advertising this out to the developers in the community that will be, uh, following these guidelines, so that these projects move along and they are properly MPs being installed, and no dangers happening to the environment or the public health. Education is one of the main things.
But it just reminds everybody, it's not gonna have an impact on the current fines that the charge people for code enforcement, or other things in violation of the city. This is solely things that are enforced under the stormwater regulations from the state.
That's correct. And there are two programs for pulling this problem. One is the MS4, that's our EPPS permit with the state. And the other is our sole erosion control guard permits, which are by developers and also land service permits. So those are the two guidelines that are really being inspected, and these enforcement response plan is applied to.
This formally puts it out to all developers that this is a policy in the state and the city of Haver, and these will be the guidelines. So they will have it, and as far as a formal notice of what our expectations are going forward.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do you have an example of this being a timing of park where it kept leaking water running into the road, and sediment would accumulate there, and it kept, I know we've had to talk about it two, three times, because the contractor needed to come back out there, or whatever.
Not exactly. Uh, this is not an example of water in the street. This is not an example of a failure of a stormwater pipe to work. This is an example of someone, say, dumping paint, and a stormwater catch in it. Or an example of, of sediment from a site flowing onto somebody else's site, or out in the stream. Or someone clearing a, uh, or taking their excavator down into a stream and removing soils or topsoils, or something like that would be better examples. When you talk about construction sites, it may be an example of dust in the community. They have complaints of, of a lot of dust from the neighborhood, and that would be something this would apply to. Or, say, sediment in a street from a construction site that's been there, and this is one of my examples, for five days. But this would not apply to water standing in the road, not draining. That would be a maintenance, uh, type of response.
Other questions, Mr. Council? Would you like this to come before you tomorrow night for a vote? Okay, if you will put it on the agenda for a vote tomorrow night, I will appreciate it.
Mayor, I have one more item of a different subject, just to mention to Council. I know they would be interested to hear. Oh, New Haven, we're aware of work concerns with a main break in New Haven, because we're being down for water service. Uh, I just wanted to advise Council, we're moving forward with a plan to loop the system. So we are having an engineer working with, with them to see if we can tie in another feed source to New Haven. And that would allow customers, maybe sale line, let's better, provide a better service to them at New Haven.
Much like in Stonebridge?
Exactly.
I, maybe I misunderstood when these issues first arose, but I guess I was under the, understanding that the looping would be done in New Haven at the same time that it was done in Stonebridge. Is there, did I just misunderstand that chat, or is there a reason why that's not happening at that time?
I guess for clarification, it has been impossible to loop New Haven without making another connection. The original looping that was left for Stonebridge wasn't able to, to be completed because of Saye Heights community, uh, which connects to the back. So when we were able to connect Saye Heights in and loop Stonebridge, so the timing was, was very, uh, very good to complete that loop and allow isolation valves, which if we have a problem in there, it minimizes a few homes instead of the entire neighborhood. Currently in New Haven, we do not have another feed source, but we are looking to just make a new tab off of the city, I mean, the counties reporting, and loop that system as well.
Okay, I recall that looping and the isolation valves were part of the discussion with New Haven people. Not that New Haven was getting isolation valves, but, uh, that, that was given as a reason for them to be encouraged to think that it was gonna improve, because of this looping into New, into Saye Heights was going to help. And apparently, it did help for a while, because we just now, we went a long period of time without a break, but now we have two in two months. Our discussions assured those people that we weren't gonna just talk from, maybe this will work, maybe this will work, maybe this will work, and that we would take action to finally remedy that problem there.
Well, there's, there's.
It's a significant issue with residents, and the number of residents who don't feel like that's the place they can live out to retire, through their retirement, like they had planned to do. Some even feel like, we know our houses are not as costly as the houses in neighborhoods around us. There's a very big community concern about the fact that they, nothing comes to them as pipe to your, we're gonna replace them. And we certainly gave them that aggression the last time.
Well, I think what we did, and just for clarification, what we did for Stonebridge did help New Haven. It did not help in this immediate, or this example of the most recent main break, because the main break was in New Haven. The previous main breaks that we had concerns with that were addressing were in Stonebridge. So now if there's a main break in Stonebridge, New Haven doesn't lose its water. Previously, New Haven lost water if there was a break in the neighboring subdivision. Now, we have those subdivisions are independent systems. We have to be able to loop both of the subdivisions to provide the same level of water supply that we've supplied for Stonebridge. So, for a clear explanation or simple explanation, the looping and isolation valves we installed in Stonebridge helped New Haven to keep water at any time of the break in Stonebridge. However, it is not looped in New Haven, so if one's in New Haven, we still have to shut that portion of New Haven down, completely repair it. So, the original work did help this will further that.
Other questions, Mr. Council?
I'm just not sure how long we can put these people all in the court, just like, you know, that. When, when New Haven was having frequent breaks, one after the other after the other. Maybe I completely misunderstood, but I thought that was a result of the old pipes in New Haven. I didn't know Stonebridge was the problem, like, to say.
Well, if I remember correctly, I'm correct, if I'm wrong, all the most recent breaks, I think, out of six, or seven, five, all but one of them were in Stonebridge. So every time New Haven would lose water, it was because of a failed pipe in Stonebridge. The reason why New Haven hasn't been the, I guess, the corporate, for lack of a better word, is the problem is because its pressure is a little lower than Stonebridge. So Stonebridge has, has a high-pressure problem, it also has the old pipe, and was having more frequent breaks than New Haven expected. So its severity requires, uh, Stonebridge was looked at as the first priority to get repaired. And it also allows water to still service New Haven if there is a problem in Stonebridge. This is now, obviously, their second step in the program.
Stonebridge does not have the same pipes that New Haven does.
Yes.
They do, they have the same ones?
Two, C two hundred PVC pipe. That's right.
I guess I just wanna add, I do not want to reach another situation where this is occurring on a routine basis, and we rightfully have a group of angry constituents who we are failing to deliver services to. That's unacceptable to me. And I think it's unacceptable to all of us. And, and so I just, I just, I just wanna say, all right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get left on the end. I want us to be proactive and providing these people the services that they deserve and that they can afford. That's all I can say.
I think we are there. This is a tough priority of a solution, but if we'll actually loop two supplies and do the same thing in New Haven that we did with the isolation valves and all in New Haven. So I think that will eliminate the massive threat of the problem. So give them two, two supply sources where they only have one today.
That's correct.
Was that plan that's going forward? I mean, you're.
I've been instructed to, I've been instructed to work through that plan, and that's why I was advising you tonight.
Okay, perhaps we should have an informational meeting with the people that live in New Haven, to let them know that this is not being overlooked, and that we're taking this corrective action. I'd like to request that.
We give the plan by last, and we'll get that action through, because we haven't put the plan together through the engineering group.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 4C is the Office of City Attorney, foreseeing one discussion of amending Red Speed contract.
We are not city attorneys, I'll see if I can do, get that down, get through, oh, I think. Uh, in, I believe it was in 2020, uh, City Internet took a reference with Red Speed to, uh, issued or set up a speed enforcement in the school zone for the Soto and Fort Street, uh, which actually began today. During the process, there was an agreement made between the City and Red Speed, uh, with thirty-five percent of that revenue that included a, what they call LPR, license plate reader. I believe Mayor and Council are familiar that we, um, began looking at a program called Flock. Also, there was additional license plate readers within the community. We learned during the process of Flock that Red Speed could be used as part of that system. So, when we began the process of looking at that being added, um, there was some discussion, I don't know, if we made extra fee over the same fee. Red Speed is agreed with the same percentage that they agreed originally with the twenty percent. And so we just need to modify the contract where it goes to Flock here, or. percent, and so we just need to modify the contract where it goes to Flock there as a LPR. So it's no more money being taken from the civil fines from those who are cited for speeding in the school zones. So it's just a continuation of our contract specific for Flock, LPR being.
Questions, Council? We'll just add the overall Flock program that we're looking at for the countywide industries, utilizing Flock software, I'll take it, for the cameras that were already in the race and stuff.
That's great.
This is something we'll need to vote on tomorrow, and we'll add that to the county council election, agreeable with you? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Appreciate you filling in. Item five, our council member, Ms. Bottom Grace.
I'll have to wait, we'll join the break after twenty-two fifty, before we wind it down. We'll have a sound in the next twenty-three.
Middle of twenty-three again? The lighting of one twenty-seven on public's, the team's gathering?
Yes, that's okay.
Somewhere in the middle of twenty-three, I think, is the estimated date I have got. May it set Denver, the top twenty-three?
I think probably at least time-wise, you can take a look at what they've done on the Joy Road, and they have to give you an idea on what the house will play. I'm trying to think identical product.
No question. Let me go through it.
I knew that question was coming. We, we need staff and our team, the architects and the construction men who have worked diligently on it. We are a little bit of a time saver at this point in time. You also expect the city to guarantee the price from three all considerations September sixth, and assuming you're okay with that, we should start construction very early. And that pushes the completion time for a in March.
Any questions? City manager, that please play every march.
Mayor Council, the city's current purchasing policy that requires that any purchase for materials above twenty-five thousand dollars requires that we follow a formal procurement process, which means we come up with full specs, we advertise it, we can do a sealed bid, and bring to you the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Given inflation and how hard it's been to gather vehicles, I'm asking for your consideration to allow me to, specifically for the vehicles that were approved in the FY twenty-three budget, to not follow that process, to actually follow the process below that, which is the request for informal quotes process. What we do there is we still advertise that we're looking for specific vehicles, but we do not require a formal bidding process. What we require is a supplier will still have to give us a quote. It allows us to use a shorter time, it allows us to talk with vendors instead of just doing the sealed bid. If they send us a quote and they include it, a grown package, for example, we call and say, hey, send us a new quote without the front on it, so we know, so we're compared apples to apples. For your information, I believe there were eleven vehicles that were approved in the FY twenty-three budget. Most of those are replacement vehicles, they're not new vehicles, and five of them are actually police vehicles. For those vehicles, I would still follow the normal process, just because they have so many very specific pieces, you know, very specific requirements for police vehicles, I think it still warrants a formal process. But essentially, I'm asking for you all would allow me to bid those out following an informal process, knowing that you all would still have the old bits to say, they would still come to you for approval, I would just not follow the formal process. What that will allow us to do is possibly get a better price, possibly get vehicles at all, given how possible it is to get them recently, and also the negotiation factor. It'll cut some time off at the beginning, so possibly get it in there. I think all we need there is the current schedule, you guys would still do the formal quotes at the purchase.
Questions, Council? That would be about six vehicles that you're talking about. You've got eleven order, five police cars.
That's correct, yes.
And just try to get them into our system quicker, because I'm not standing against it. Many of the cars are not going to be delivered on a bid order until sometime mid-twenty-three.
That's, yeah, that seems to be about right. Yes, sir.
Any questions? Would that require a vote, Mr. Gilmore, or is it consensus?
Because initially, I think if you just concur, like he said, it still comes back to you, so it's good to inform. Council's perspective relative to, you wouldn't normally see whatever that process is, it just comes to you for consideration. So if you just concur, we're doing that, we're going to try and see about it.
Do we have any comments? Move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Council, I do have one item. Just wanted to give an update on short-term rentals and the hospitality tax that we're collecting. Ashley Harden has been kind of monitoring that, you know, for the last six months, for the first six months of the year. And it looks like we're averaging about a thousand dollars worth of money per month from short-term rentals that we've included. So just wanted to hear how people have.
A lot more than we know.
Well, I think I want to remind everybody, school went back in section today. We have school buses, some kids walking. Red Speed went into effect today at Perry High School, Coker, Morningside, on Morningside Drive, and King Chapel Road. We're still waiting some DOT paperwork for Perry Middle or Matt Arthur. I expect my phone will start ringing in the next few days, when people start getting the warnings in the way up, we'll deal with that. But just remind everybody to be careful, be alert with the school's office, if you're not watching, get used to the yellow bus back on the road.
Thank you. One question on that area, if I may, Chief, is there plans to put one out by Westfield too?
It's my understanding that Westfield was contacted and never agreed to the process. They were offered to do so at the same time, but was never contacted back.
Okay. I just anticipated getting my question to work this week, so thank you.
That's fine. Chief Ward, nothing I can...
Mr. Swan?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I just want to give you a brief update regarding our football program. There is a national football equipment shortage going on, so helmets and shoulder pads are back ordered. So like I said, it's national, it's a national issue, so we're working with our partner agencies that will compete against, come up with an alternative. So before your phones start ringing, saying that I'm a big bone, it's a national issue. I want to say that first.
That's no surprise. There's anything I can add, I think, some of that, sorry. Ms. Fitzpatrick? Ms. Warren, anything more to see? Ms. Park?
No, sir.
Ms. Park, anything to say?
Nothing to say.
Is there anything else? At least a couple of words to see if you will get current. If not, that's a good one, I don't have any questions for the turn, until tomorrow afternoon, it's about a clock. Go ahead. It's not that late yet, you guys are really good. Everybody in the playroom there, when you play, try to...